Okay, we have everybody here. We're gonna start this. Call to order.
Well called. Brian Mahan. Pat Rucheski.
President.
Doug Houston.
President.
Brian Geezy.
President.
Dave Schwed.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to stand and pledge allegiance to the
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Virtue card reading. And the virtue for today is?
Joyfulness.
Joyfulness. Joyfulness is an inner sense of peace and happiness. You appreciate the gifts each day brings without joyfulness. When the fun stops, our happiness stops. Joy can carry us through the hard times, even when we are feeling very sad. Joy gives us wings. You are practicing joyfulness when you look inside for happiness, enjoy whatever you are doing, feel good about doing what is right, find creative ways to enjoy your time, have a good sense of humor, feel an inner peace when things are tough. Affirmation. I'm thankful for the joy I feel inside. I enjoy my work and my play. I appreciate the gifts this day holds for me.
Thank you, Pat. We establish as Board of Education guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all numbers, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for open, for public comments.
I have one just real quick. So Amy Kuno, I'm a parent of Nacusa students. I just wanted to say that my daughter, who will be a senior this year, just came back on the end of May from a year abroad, studying abroad. And I just wanted to say, as a parent and as a parent of a child that studied abroad for a year, I think we need to encourage our students a little bit more to do that exchange program. She did not go through the school program. She went through the Rotary Program, but I think just as a parent and as a school district, we need to encourage our kids to broaden their horizons and not worry so much about their friends and their sports and all the stuff that they think holds them back from wanting to do this. And just to encourage them a little bit more to see the world and get it, get that under their belt while they're still young and impressionable. She went to Chile in South America for the entire school year. She went to Easter Island. I don't know, probably any of you in this room that know someone that went to Easter Island, now you can all say you do.
Well, we need to have her come and talk to the board.
Yeah, she has a presentation that she has to do next week to the Rotary. So it's just, she had amazing experience. She learned so many new things, but so many challenges with people, families, host families, that did not go as well as we would have liked. But it was an experience that she will never forget. Got to travel all over the country, learned so many new things, did so many things on her own as a 16-year-old child that I would never have expected a 16-year-old child to do. So I think just as a community, a school, as a high school, we need to encourage our students to do that more, to get out there and to just, to just do it, to get out of their comfort zone, to get away from their, not away from their friends, but to just break away a little bit more and to just do it. Just the experience is incredible.
Sounds fantastic. I want, I'm looking forward to the presentation.
Yeah, if you want her to come in, I'm sure she would.
I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
Sure she would love to do it.
Would you work with Diana to set that up for an upcoming board meeting? That'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
So I just wanted to tell you that, you know, and she's one of the first ones in probably 10, 15 years, if not more, that has been, that has gone out. I know we're good at bringing them into Nacusa as exchange students, not send one out in a really, really, really long time. So.
Thank you for being the first.
She was happy to do it. Unfortunately, it was a very long nine months for the rest of the family, but it was worth it. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you very much for sharing that. I like to hear those kinds of things, that's nice. Okay. At this time, I would like to come to a, we're gonna work on showcasing schools and student learning. We're gonna begin with the CWSA update. So if we wanna move ahead with that. And one request is that you possibly move up a little bit into that corner right over here by Megan. Just so we can hear you better.
So Mr. Rogers, you wanna introduce our CWSA friends?
We have Amy Kuno, who's a member of our governance council. She serves as the assistant chair. And then Chris Krunge, who's our CWSA resource specialist. So they're just gonna provide an update. We had our governance council meeting yesterday and provide you some information about what went on there.
Thank you very much.
We have some stuff to pass out, too. So I just wanna also add, so I started on the board as a parent rep and now that time is done for me. My daughter, my youngest daughter is moving on to high school, but I am staying on for another year as a community member because I believe so strongly in the program. So I just wanted to kinda clarify that. She is staying going beyond to high school. Excited for that new chapter in our lives. So I am glad they're staying on as a community member. So yeah, we had our regular board meeting yesterday, council meeting. So what we are handing out right now is our school learning objective for math and reading for our STAR testing. So it just kinda shows you kind of how, how it's improved.
When you're looking at those numbers, we're starting to see some growth. Well, the growth we're kind of, that we're looking for. There are some, as we break down the numbers, speaking with Mr. Rogers, working with our school administrator, we're gonna try to figure out some of the mean math, especially with the younger students. It's the first time doing an online math program. And their scores reflect that. It's the first time that they're taking ownership of things. And so are there ways that we can improve that going forward to bring those scores up faster in those first years? Or when we look at, especially the reading objectives, we had a really, really good year last year. We have one anomaly in there that, once again, we need to look at that number, the seventh graders, the eighth graders, and see maybe why that happened. But we have the numbers now. We'll be working with Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Radke to really kinda come up with a plan moving forward with those things. We are looking at adding, with our standards-based learning, we're trying to work this year specifically, possibly on creating an SLO that measures our students' ability to unpackage standards for themselves with standards-based learning. We have some tentative plans for that. We're gonna be working with our academic resource committee, Mr. Rogers, and actually, we'll have some questions for Mr. Black moving forward on that because you actually were kind of the impetus for it, so.
You know, and the number that Chris was referring to is on, on the reading, CWSA reading, on that little chart, that little table. We tried to follow last year's fourth grade to this year's fifth grade and look at their SGP on how they improved in last year's fifth grade to this year's sixth grade, because it's the same group of students. And we found that every grade their SGP improved, except for that in reading, the seventh graders, last year's seventh graders to this year's eighth graders, the SGP went down. Every other grade level, they went up. So that's what he was referring to and what that, that chart is meant to illustrate.
And let's be clear, that 54 that they went down to is still a solid score.
It is, yep. You wanna, you know, that standard bell curve, you know, like, talked with Mr. Black about before, you know, 40th to 60th, you know, and that bell curve kinda flows in there and you want them somewhere in between there. Really, you know, hopefully 50 or above would be the best.
So that's the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one other thing that we wanna discuss really quick, too, is the RACI that, I don't know what it, like, what would you call it?
A chart. Chart, I think.
Chart, is that the best word for it? So those of you that aren't familiar with that, I just learned about it last night at our meeting. We have Wendy Grun, who is our new treasurer on board. She's a parent representative. She put this chart together, which is this amazing chart of all our roles and responsibilities from everyone, including the school board, to us, to the staff, everyone. It lays out roles, responsibilities, everything. And it just lays it out in a really nice, easy way to understand it. So she shared it with all of us. We're going to, as a board, we're going to look through it, give any feedback, and then when we come back together for our next meeting, we're gonna go through all of our comments and our questions for her. We went through it kinda quick. That was the first time I'd seen it and the rest of us, besides Brian, our chairman. So we're gonna go through it again and really look through it and understand what our roles are, what our responsibilities are, who our contacts are, if we have questions, if there are issues, you know, when we need to go to Clint, when we need to go to Brian, who's our chairman, when we need to do this, when we need to do that, and really just discuss it and get it understood. And then it's gonna be a really great tool for when we have new council members come onboard, which is kind of, it's gonna be great, but it would've been great to have this when we first started. So I think some of our roles have not been really clearly defined, but this'll be great for new people that come onboard and we can really show them and guide them and just say, this is why, this is how we do it and this is why we do it. You know, it follows all of our guideline, our bylaws and our, and the contract and all that stuff. So we're gonna look through it individually and then come back together at our next meeting and go through it.
And what the RACI acronym stands for is the R responsible, so who's responsible for doing it? The A, who's accountable for making sure that it happens? The C is for who needs to be consulted for something like that, or for whatever the task is. And the I is who needs to be informed of when it happens.
So the board, I think, will be excited to see that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be something we could use as a board.
Yeah, it's a really great formula, how they, you know, it's something that she uses on a daily basis for her position at work. So it's something she's really familiar with and just, it's just a really great table that she put together and, you know, put some time and effort into it, which was great. And she's only been on our board for, what, two, I think, two or three months? But she's been a really great asset to us already.
Officially since May.
Yeah, so.
And what's exciting, you know, and thank you, but what's exciting is we worked through some challenges, you know, as we moved from last year having three teachers to this next year now having one teacher and Chris, and last year, three teachers and Chris. But there were some communication issues. There were hangups and bangups, right? And really, this tool now, we actually had somebody come in and talk about roles and responsibilities of each of the members. And then that was outlined. And then from that information session, Wendy took this, took the information that was shared and kinda mapped it out. So hopefully now, you know, next time we have some challenges that come forward, we're gonna have a better way of working through them.
Yeah, and you'll know exactly, if there are those challenges, you'll know exactly what steps to take and who to talk to instead of, you know, it just going back and forth and no resolution coming from it. You'll know exactly who to talk to and, you know, the steps you need to take. And if there's multiple people you need to talk to or if there's only one person you need to talk to, you'll just, you'll have it and it is in black and white.
I believe the intention moving forward is kinda, the goal would be to attach it to the bylaws so that it is a part, besides being a part of the welcome packet, but from, from the board's operational standpoint, to have that be part of our, almost an operational guideline for the running of the board, and that's why we did look to attach it to there. Of course, we, once it's completed and all those edited provisions are complete, copies would be provided to the Nacusa School District Board. So, because obviously, you, the Nacusa School District also plays an enormous role in CWSA. And so we would probably, we'd like, we'd like to get your approval once it's complete as well.
Thank you very much for the SLOs. It's nice to see that progress. And Ms. Kuno, you're, as you said, you know, when you began on that board, if you would've understood more of the stewardship roles that you play on that board, you probably could've been more effective. But, you know, that's one thing that we, we sort of, as stewards of the district and those roles that we play, in defining that is so important. It really, it sounds exciting.
Yeah, it is. I think it'll be very, very helpful, so.
Thank you both for the hard work you put into this and updates.
Thank you.
Okay. This month, we have our, why I serve on the Board of Education. I think we're on our second time through this as a board. We've kinda gone through five months. This month, Mr. Brian Mahan. It's, Lord, tell me, tell us why you serve on the Board of Education, why you chose to serve on the Board of Education.
Um, there's many, many reasons that I serve on the board, but I figured I'd take a minute just to highlight the, I guess, the main issue within the board today. And so that main issue for me right now is attracting and retaining quality teachers in this district. And I think the way I look at it is it's twofold. We need to work to build an atmosphere in this district that make people want to come here and want to stay here. But along with that, we need to provide a fair and competitive salary to our teachers, and I think that's something that's important. Those things are a part to everybody in this room right now. And I just wanted to highlight that and just state that I look forward to working on those issues with everybody in this room in the future here. So that's the main issue with me right now, and that's all I have.
That was only one minute.
That's perfect.
We got three. Well, thank you very much, Brian. We're glad that you're on our board and thank you for your time. At this time, we're gonna move on to Mr., Ms. Knight, and looking after the Nexus Power Report.
Here tonight with us is Devin Ike from Nexus. I'm just gonna hand it right over to him.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone.
Good to see you back in the district.
Yes, I'm just back. It's nice to be back here in Nacusa, although, you know, you may not see us very often, but we are in this vicinity because one of the things I'd like to share is that this project, when it got approved and implemented, was, was very successful. We believe in it helped to spawn projects in other districts very close by, such as Nacida, Wisconsin Rapids. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with not only Nacusa, but the surrounding communities and help improve the quality of school facilities throughout the state. I'm Jeff Mangan. I'm an accounting executive with Nexus. This is Ike McWaters, who you probably saw a lot more of than me in recent years. I was involved more in the development process. And Ike, as a project manager, was involved in the implementation, but in looking through some of the materials that we put together, retracing the steps that we followed. It's interesting, I think this project first started back in fall of 2013 with additional discussions. And it takes a while to get things going through the plan phase, the development phase started in earnest that winter, spring of the fall of the year before we entered into Phase One in 2014. And that accomplished a number of things, but then Phase Two was the most significant. And then together, those phases spanned a few years. But went very well, I think. You can validate that or invalidate it. You know, there's always problems on projects, but, you know, you work through those problems and I think overall it was very successful. You've got two reports in the board packets. You've got the project wrap-up PowerPoint, which Ike is gonna step through quickly. We've got a lot of before and after pictures. We like to show those because people forget what things used to look like. And it's a good reminder of the improvements, the impact it makes on facilities and the learning environment. And then you also have another report, which is the measurement and verification performance report. And I'll talk briefly about that after Ike talks first about the projects themselves.
Yeah, so as Jeff said, thanks for letting us work with you. I had a great time. Ended up moving to the community, so you didn't scare me away. What?
Just gonna start bringing kids to districts.
Don't tell the wife. So the first, the first couple slides is the list of original BIMs that were approved by the board. And breaks it all, Phase One, like Jeff had said, is a smaller phase. I think we did some lighting retrofits, windows over here at the Humky School. That was a smaller phase that jumps into Phase Two, which covered the major projects. The high school remodel, Humky remodel, roofing at the middle school, Alexander. So those are the original BIMs, and if you scroll down a little bit, Lynn, it shows the additions to the project. And the slide after these additions, it shows the total budget of 14.6 million of the original approved BIMs. And then it shows additional projects. So we were able to accomplish $275,000 of additional projects with that original approved budget. So we were able to squeeze some things in, things like the library at the high school, the fax area, the envelope of the district office here. And there were some deletions, too, which, which are covered inside. But things like the northwest parking lot that was revolting to, to be eliminated, things like that were taken out. Stairtrials, trazal repairs, if you remember at the high school, they weren't, wasn't really feasible to repair that, so we got to put that money back into the budget and use it for these additional projects that we went forward with. So that's pretty much what the slides are. At the end of it, it shows some kind of before and after pictures. Here's the, the middle school windows before and after. They look clean, and here's the facelift out, out in front of Humky here at the canopy. The colors were, look good. Windows again at Humky. It's funny, 'cause I hadn't really been in the district much when the old windows were here, and so when I was going through putting these pictures in, I, I had no idea that they're like the glass, glass blocks like that. So looks, looks cleaner. Here's the hallway, pictures before and after. And not a lot done, but new lighting and new ceilings really changes the, the look of the space. Bathroom remodels, we were able to do two sets, one at Humky, one at the high school. Really cleans those up. These are our classroom here at Humky. You can see the new CDVUs that were put in versus the old ones. And again, the windows from the inside. The cafeteria, again, lighting and ceilings, makes a big difference. The gym, hardly recognizable. Once we got the floor in, and I hope she likes it, but I think it looks, looks good. Roofing pictures was tough. I had all the originals are snow-covered, but I sure, I sure it looks better than, than what's under the snow. The high school kitchen, that, that really opened up the space, taking that wall out, that wall that you see on the left side there, the left picture on the right side of it, that wall is gone now. So that's why it looks so much bigger on the picture on the right. So hopefully that's working out for them, too. The library, again, hardly recognizable, but it looks a lot better. The fax area, that's two pictures of the new space. I didn't have any pictures of, of the old space, but I think it was, was it offices before we moved in there?
Old, yeah, old offices and a suite of bathrooms, too.
Okay.
There were several, like six bathrooms in that area. But that's the new academy.
Yep. This is the bathrooms at the high school, so original on the left and the new colors and things on the right. Fax area, she got her stainless steel countertops and mechanical spaces, you know, I mean, they were pretty rough shape when we got here and with the new units and things, I think they cleaned them up. I think Steve's, hopefully Steve's happy with it. And then annual, annual energy savings, and that's what Jeff will jump into here with the next, with the M&amp;V report.
So Ike and I are just two of the many people from Nexus that were involved in this project from start to finish and certainly working with the administration, the board, and staff. It takes a lot of people, a lot of people's cooperation and compliance to get these types of projects planned, developed, and implemented. The measurement and verification team from Nexus has confirmed that the district is achieving the savings projections, which we set as fairly conservative, you know, the, under the Act 32 legislation, you know, it's described as energy efficiency projects. That's part of it. There's also operational savings. A lot of people forget that, that's actually mentioned in the wording of the legislation that, you know, it's not just energy, but it's also corresponding operational savings from reduced repairs and maintenance, I would say, purchased goods and services. But we determined that the district is meeting the savings projections. It doesn't pay for the whole project, of course. It's really just one of the side benefits, if you will. The real benefit is the approved learning spaces for the students and staff. But the, the details of the M&amp;V analysis are in this report. You can feel free to take a look at that, both the methods they use to confirm those savings.
And that report is used to file the state report at year-end, so.
Yes. So we utilize onsite inspection to make sure everything's installed that was promised. And, you know, without project management, you know, it's interesting how often things are not installed the way they should be. And our, our oversight helped to ensure that subcontractors were doing the work as specified. And then commissioning efforts, I think you mentioned there's a commissioning report if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, you'll get an electronic copy of them. It's 500 pages, so I didn't bring the paper copy. But that'd be available to anybody that wants to see.
Commissioning is important because it confirms that the, all the mechanical and control systems are, and lighting systems are all installed as designed, right? Because a lot of times they're not installed as designed and equipment's put in backwards. Sometimes you've seen that before, right?
That's where they catch the mechanical or install mistakes and get corrected and fine-tune things, I guess, to. And there's also a retro commissioning report for, for the middle school, the 2007 section of the high school. Buildings that we didn't do any changes to mechanically, there is a retro commissioning, so they still went through those systems. That may be most beneficial because it would show any, any, any areas where you could, could do tweaks or things like that. So that'll, that'll be included in the commissioning report.
So our goal is always to ensure that clients' projects are installed on time and on or under budget. And I think we've accomplished that here with quality workmanship. And, you know, any lingering problems that surface, we wanna know about them. I think that's another value add that Nexus provides to make sure that you're satisfied.
Yep, well, and I met with Steve last week, 11-month review, make sure we catch anything that needs to be brought up for warranty. You know, the warranty's expired year after year. So anybody else, too, if you see something that you think, think should be covered on a warranty, we've got about a month here to get that out to contractors and make sure it's taken care of.
And they have taken care of things, so there's been some things uncovered, but.
Yep, yep, and things will come up, I mean, they always do that, so you have that one-year warranty and hopefully you can catch everything and get it corrected.
Any questions or comments?
I've been through each of the buildings since the work's been done and I'm very well pleased with the work accomplished. Very, very well done.
Good, thank you.
It's kind of, it was a, it was a great process to work through. And, yeah, we walked through our buildings. We're proud of what we have and we're proud of, you know, where they're going to carry us in the future. I think that's one of the things that was, was in.
I think that's one of the things that was, was in mind when we move forward with this is how do we maintain that quality learning environment spaces? You certainly have helped enable us to do that. You know, Lynn and the team that worked on that, I, I thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Come back and see us.
We will.
I'll look forward to that commissioning report.
Yeah.
It's good reading material.
Shall we have to see the last of you, Ike?
Oh, yeah. You'll see me around.
John will see him in a couple of minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much. We're going to move forward with the Mr. John Spring, the Achievement Gap Reduction Report.
Thank you, Brian. For those who don't know, the achievement, I'll start with a quick overview of it, but the AGR Achievement Gap Reduction is an agreement that we have with the state of Wisconsin and the DTI, the DPA rewards as extra funds for participating in this program. So this is a report that we complete in agreement to fulfill that obligation. And just to give a little bit of a timeline right there, we, and I'll add a little bit more information, we use that money essentially to help bring a coach. And that's where we designate, and that coach is really, on all purposes, Jackie Hines, who's coming and doing the reading goals with that. So that's where we really designated our money. Even with that, we were still able to take relatively low class sizes. And in addition to that, a little bit more about the progress, in the spring of 2016, the staff, each grade came through and set goals that they did to help measure their achievement. They, they tracked that during the course of the school year this past year. And there were different means that each, each group, each grade had a goal in which they were shooting for. And that's outlined in the copy that I shared with you. They measured that throughout the course of the year. And at the spring semester, or excuse me, at the end of the fall semester, mid-winter essentially, they reported the progress on that. We reflected on that as a group when we did that monitoring through our, on one of our school leadership teams. And then we did it again at the end of the year. And each one of those individual AGR goals, as we call them, were reflected on and measured and that those are reported out on the goal for you. A couple of things that I'll highlight that I shared with the staff into it and just overall with the progress, one of the things that I noticed right now with our math is that at the beginning of the year, the average kid percentile rank goes at the 55th percentile, which is really pretty good. You know, every kid, the whole building, that's the average kid taking math. At the end of the year, they were at the 60th percentile, which is, was like phenomenal. So, and again, that's a lot of reasons for that, but that's, you know, something that we're very, you know, excited about. And then the reading, it's kind of hard, if you can't say at the beginning of the year, here's our average, because not everybody does the pre-assessment, because they're doing start early literacy, or they're doing start, start reading. So it's hard to get a beginning of the year and an average year. But our kids finished at the 48th percentile in reading, ranked the average kid, and the average kid also had one year's growth. So that's good. Obviously, we're looking to improve upon that and that's why we're dedicating a lot of work into bringing Jackie in and doing work related to what we call partners in comprehensive literacy and really developing more of a workshop model in reading. And those, those are goals in which we'll continue to build on and work towards in the future. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain any interpretations, anything to report that was given to you.
I just have one question, John. There's a group of students then that didn't see that one-year growth. So then, what, what happens with those students in the fall then? Is there anything, any special intervention that takes place right away in the fall to kind of work with those students?
Good question. Thank you, yeah. In fact, one of the things is we do over the, last year, we took time to really develop our data wall. And our data wall is something we're going to continue to grow. Our data wall is a process by which we put, okay, here's where these kids are at in relationship to where we want them to be. Okay, so we're tracking these kids. Our staff is interacting with that data. And so right now, during the course of the year, we're taking steps to help make sure that the kids are getting what they need right now. So it doesn't like, okay, the year is over, now what do we do? It's an ongoing intervention process throughout the whole year and everything. So at the end of the year, one of the things that we did also is like, you know what, seeing where these kids are at right now, we're not going to wait until next year. We invite these kids, hey, we send out a letter to the parents. We say, we highly recommend that your students participate based on this information. They have the data and the information to show where their kid is at growth-wise. So they're able to use that to, you know, we recommend kids to come in and participate in summer school. Then we also flag a few other kids, it's kind of like just based on their needs that we identify, we'll also flag them in for what's called Jump Start. So these are the kids who just need, they might be urgent intervention, where we say, based on this information, we want you to come in and really work in a small group setting and preparation for the school year to start. So we're putting all these measures in throughout the course of the year and then the course of the summer. And then when they come in, one of the things that we'll do right away, we'll take a little bit of time to kind of get things up and organized, but then we have systems of intervention to come in and to help meet those kids. And we have teams of teachers who serve those kids to make sure that that process, that those kids are getting pushed out.
That's a great question. And as a matter of fact, there's a team next week going to, where are you going?
Well, we're going tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
This week they're going. But when they come back, that would be an excellent question. They want to come and share with the board their new learning and, you know, changes that are going to take place. So we'd really like them to come back in and answer questions like that. Because we're, we absolutely, we've been using a model in our, at Humke, and, you know, we've been talking about the workshop model. So they're now transitioning to this workshop model, which is more intentional, more purposeful, more deliberate instruction to kids just where they're at, so that we're moving everybody along the continuum. So that would be great to actually have you guys come in and share that with the board. And Jackie Hines, who's this coach, is really spearheading a lot of this with the team over there.
Fantastic. Yeah. Just to highlight again, real quick with that data board, what we're really, you know, one of the things like, okay, I think we want to do a better job with this, is getting more of those learners who are probably more on the margins, move further during the year. And so that's something that the data board, we kind of hope to highlight more and you can see more of those kids get over to the right where they're, you know, meeting and exceeding standards.
Great, thank you, John.
Yep.
It's going to be interesting to see, and I think the grade level proficiencies, you know, I think have been improved. And to see where that goes with these new strategies, that's going to just, you know, what they learn in elementary school carries with them, right, and what they're going to be experiencing at the next level. So the better, you've got the right tools in place to get them prepared. And thank you very much for your, for your time, John. At this point, we want to work towards the approval of annual notices. And the first one up is the notice of academic standards forward slash educational options. And I'll turn the call over to Mr. Ike.
And I won't keep it very long, because this is just a basic overview. And for note, these are, every year, we declare which academic standards we set as the bar that we're moving towards. And these standards are posted on our webpage, in our new reorganized webpage, this is in the curriculum instruction area. But for math and English language arts, we're focused, we use the Common Core State Standards for, as, in kindergarten, K through 12. And we're also, in the area of science, we're using the Next Generation Science Standards. For art, we're using the National Core Art Standards. And for all of the subject areas, the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards. So there's links provided to all of those for those interested. Or if people have any questions about those, please come and talk with me about it. Love to talk on that front. The other piece is educational options, just a notice, there's a lot of options that are available for residents of the district, ranging across the board, from works we do in the district, to virtual options that we provide for youth options that we have for students at the high school, ranging all the way to also recognizing that there's chances to be able to join for private schools or open enrollment. Across the board, there's a number of options that are available for, for our students. And so anyone who are curious about what resources are available to you, again, please come talk to us, we'd be glad to work with you.
That was quick. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll turn the call over to Mr. Brian Grill, and we're going to talk about the Special Needs Scholarship Program.
Yep. And this is just for your information, so, sorry, I have enough copies for the board.
No problem.
This one is just an annual notice that I need to provide for parents that started last year. And it's just letting them know if they were to apply for our Special Education Needs Scholarship, which is basically a scholarship to take to a private school. It kind of lets them know the process and how it works. And this annual notice will also be posted on the pupil, student services website as well. But this just lets them know that how the process works, there is application, their student does have to have an IEP. They had to attend a public school within the last school year for the entire year. And then also too, they had to apply to at least two districts under open enrollment, appeal the open enrollment denied, and the state upheld the appeal. So this scholarship is to a very small population, but it's the responsibility of the school district to let families of students with disabilities know that this is an option. So this just goes home, this letter right here will go home. I do an annual welcome back to school letter to families, and this will be part of the back to school letter packet, but then, like I said, it's also posted on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go right back to you, Mr. Grill, the seclusion and restraint annual report.
Yep. So you guys received my report ahead of time. I also just have a brief presentation for you.
I think we might have to approve those notices.
Okay, we do. Yep, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of annual notices.
I will.
Call in favor, eh?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, oh, I have it. Motion free. Thank you for catching that. Okay, back to our report.
Seclusion restraint, so annually per Act 25 is my responsibility just to report to you about our use, our training, and whose seclusion and restraint was used on this year in our school district. So that's the reason this report is here every year. And it is just a good radar for me to see how often are we using this? Why are we using it? What can we do to help decrease these numbers? And the thing I, go to the next slide, please. The things I look at are just, and these are the required parts, and as you see in my report, I dug a little bit deeper. So I just have to tell you the number of seclusions, the number of restraints, how many students with disabilities was it used on, and how many students without disabilities was it used on. And then here you'll see, just for the numbers of actual incidents, the number this year held steady in restraint at 30, and seclusion went down to zero. So that's good to see that we're holding steady. And I'll say, you know, in looking at when we're using it, there were a few times a student was about to run into the middle of the road. Well, the student was in danger to himself, so that's an appropriate time if you're going to make sure the child's safe, that's an appropriate use. But the nice thing is we do have a reporting process where the report comes to my office, where if there's incident and I look and a student wasn't in imminent harm or danger to themselves, that's where I provide training, that's where I talk with other staff members. But if it was, that's where I'm talking with staff and about how can we prevent this from happening again, to make sure the student and the environment is safe for them. But altogether, it was eight students with disabilities who had either restrained use on them and two students without disabilities. But what I really did when looking at the numbers here, the proactive strategies we are going to work on this year. We continue to train staff on the nonviolent crisis intervention. And this year, my numbers for recertification and initial certification are so high. Last year I did two days, I am up to four days this summer in training. And for those that encounter students that are just new classroom teachers that are learning, okay, how do I talk to students? What language should I use? We are now offering a one-day training that solely focuses on how do you set limits with students? How do you talk to students with respect? How do you do all these different things about two? We all know, if we escalate our voice, what are students going to do? Escalate right back. Talking to them about some of those control things. And for new teachers, that helps, because classroom management is what some of new teachers always struggle with that first year. So we continue with that training program. Also too, as part of the training, we train staff, when do you document this? What is considered seclusion? What's considered restraint? When do you have to have reports written, parents notified, principal notified? So that way, we always stay compliant with the law. Also too, this summer on August 22nd, Lynn Borison, the former EBD Head Consultant at the Department of Public Instruction, is coming to perform a training on functional behavioral assessments and behavior intervention plans. Because if a student is in need of this multiple times throughout a year, we should have a plan in place for that student about what we're going to do to avoid us from getting to the level of restraint. So she's going to come in and train staff, how do I look at behavior? How do I look at the antecedent to say, what is causing this behavior? So they're receiving that training on August 22nd, so if any of you would like to step in, you are more than welcome. The other part too is, we are working on creating a proper behavior, and we talked about this a little bit today, I talked about with the, with the principals, is creating a multi-tiered system of support for behavior. What do we do at tier one? What are the supports we have? When do we move from a tier one to a tier two intervention? Because our handbooks right now really talk about our beliefs as a school, but it's not laid out in a way to say, here's our system of how we do things. So we're going to kind of change the look of the handbook a little bit to say, instead of saying, here's what we believe, it's going to say, here's what we believe and this is how it's laid out in an actual system, so we know what's step one, step two, step three. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me? You guys also have the report, which kind of is outlining this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this time, Lynn Knight will take the floor to discuss the annual review of the.
So every year, the board requested that we look at our other post-employment benefits. Our other post-employment benefits are benefits that we pay our retirees on, on an annual basis or when they retire. At the May 14th, 2012 Personnel Policy Committee meeting, the board approved the change in the other post-employment benefits, except for a minor adjustment on the SICLE that was corrected on June 11th, 2012. And I've attached that, that approved benefit, it's in your packet. Since the implementation, each eligible employee had a choice to be in group one or group two. Group one was actually the payment of insurance, and group two was getting a current year TSA active benefit. And fifty, of the 50 staff that were eligible, 30 chose to be in group one and 20 chose to be in group two. So that was back in 2012. I believe we have 21 left in group one. There was nine retirees, or nine people that retired. So in order to evaluate the, the health insurance cap, because in group one, we do have a cap, we have a 13,000 cap for a family plan, and a 6,000 cap for a single plan. You have to be 20, you have to be in the district 20 years and you have to be at least 55 years old. And the maximum amount of the years of benefit is seven, seven years or up to Medicare eligibility. So what we, our health insurance premiums are listed in the memo. 2017, 18, I have an asterisk by it, because that's the first year we're offering three plans. So I averaged the cost of those three plans. So as you can see, our costs did go down from 1617 by, well, let me see, for the family plan, it went down probably about 300, and the single plan, it went down about 400. When you look at the, the next portion of the memo, it's important to review the historical and projected OPEP expenses for the district. Back in 2012, 13, when we actually had, when we implemented the, the other post-employment change, we had expenses, and these are annual expenses. change, we had expenses, and these are annual expenses, of $778,116. That was a huge output back in 2012, 13. If we were at that level for the, you know, for those following years, I had no doubt in my mind that this district would be bankrupt. So when the board decided to make that change, they had the district's fiscal responsibility in mind. So as you can see, from 2012, 13, it gradually went down. We are now averaging out at $232,175 and that is an annual expense that we will pay with current revenues. So based on this data and the uncertainty of the next budget, I'm recommending that the benefit remain the same for the next school year of 1718. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you very much, Lynn. This was indicated information only. Are you looking for a motion on this?
I guess it went hurt.
Very good. Motion on the floor to approve the annual review and current status of the other post-employment benefits.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. At this time, Lynn, you're back on the floor. Approval of discussion and adoption of a resolution to authorize the district to participate in a health insurance exploratory committee for a possible northern area local governmental units health insurance purchasing cooperative. That pile, that'll be probably be able to describe it longer than me. Sure that it can say that.
Yeah, well, I think I mentioned to the board a couple of months ago that this was coming to you for approval. The first step was to actually approve the new health insurance company of security health. The next step, we did purchase that as a consortium. There were 12 school districts that actually participated in that consortium. Now, the next step is to actually create the consortium as a group and adopt bylaws. But in order for that, and I know it seems so backwards because it seemed backwards to me too, I don't understand the flow of it. But according to our insurance consultants, attorneys, this is the flow that has to happen. So the next step is to approve this resolution for the district to participate in a health insurance exploratory committee for the northern area local government units health insurance purchasing cooperative. So what's going to happen? Once this resolution is adopted by the board, then Rick and I will be part of this insurance committee. All 12 schools get together for a meeting, we meet all day long, we go over the bylaws, what are the penalties of getting out of the consortium early, what, there's a lot of different decisions that need to be made as a consortium, as a group. So we're going to go over those bylaws and it's coming back to the board again for approval. So there's a lot of steps in regards to creating this consortium. So I understand it's confusing and I apologize for that. It's confusing to me as well, I've never been in a consortium before, but I'm just trying to, you know, I'm listening to the, our insurance consultants, attorneys, and trying to do what's right. So if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them or I'll get the answers, but the consortium will not be effective until July 1st, 2018. So we have some time to get this going. Sorry.
No, I think it was a necessity to become involved in the consortium for us to lower our expenditures.
Yes.
Is that correct, Lynn?
That is absolutely correct.
Yep. And as a group of consortium, we have more power and larger employee base that, you know, will reduce the risk of, you know, individual districts. So motion on the floor to approve the adoption of a resolution to authorize the district to participate in a health insurance exploratory committee for possible northern area local governmental units health insurance purchasing cooperative.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moved.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to be moving on to our operational expectations, our monitoring tools under policy governance. And on the calendar this month, we have, we have a couple of them that we're going to go through. The first is OE1, which is the global operation expectation. And this, this was sent out to all board members. There was no, no, no findings to find us in violation of this global operational expectation. So at this point, we have to draw one of the two following conclusions before we find ourselves to be in a policy compliance or non-compliance. In the absence of any, any, any comments from board members regarding compliances or non-compliances, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the global operation expectation. And I guess at this point, I move the board to approve the board district operational expectation, OE1, global operation expectation monitoring report as presented.
I'll make a motion that we are in full compliance to OE1 global operation expectation monitoring tool.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one, we have OE2, emergency district administrator succession. In the absence of Terry, it's not going to happen. Terry has appointed three individuals that, he has created succession letter with input from district level administrative team. And at this point, again, there was, the board did not indicate anything, any non-compliances. So I would like to make the motion or remove the board approve board district operational expectation, OE2, emergency district administrator monitoring report.
Second.
Financial administration.
We got to vote.
Yep.
We got to vote on that.
What are we going to?
Oh, vote on that.
We had a motion in a second, but we did not vote.
Oh, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next one is OE7, financial administration. Again, there was no input from the board as to any non-compliances. Any questions or concerns by the board with OE7?
I have a short presentation for fund balance I'd like to present.
Very good.
Okay.
Part of that.
Yep. And I indicated it in number eight. So every year, I, well, not every year, I guess, it's been a while since I presented a fund balance presentation, but it seems to be that there's a lot of confusion on people's part in regards to what fund balance is. So I thought this would be a good time to explain that. What is fund balance? It's a snapshot in time. It's as of 11:59 59 PM on June 30th. That, that's just a snapshot in time. That's when all the closing journal entries are recorded, everything is done. Fund balance represents the cumulative surpluses and deficits over the years. It's basically what we own versus minus what we owe. So it's assets minus liabilities. And I'll have samples at the end to kind of give you a visual on it. It's the equivalent to governmental accounting to owner's equity in a private sector accounting. So example of Nucus' fund balance fluctuation, now, fund balance changes every single day. Every single day when something is recorded, fund balance changes. On September 30th, we had 1.8 million. On December 31st, we had a negative fund balance of 525,000, which meant our liabilities exceeded our assets. On March 31st, we had over 2.9 million and on June 30th, we had 3.5 million. The June 30th balance on 2/16 is after all the books have been closed, the auditors have been here, they're done, everything is recorded and we close the books. In September, that we are getting ready for our debt payments, so the September 30th, a balance reflects before our debt payments. The March 31st, same thing, we have debt payments in April, so that's before our debt payments. What is fund balance? Yes?
I have a question about that last slide.
Yes.
Just in reference to December 31st, it shows a negative balance, so.
Yes.
So, you know, not to go into a bunch of detail, but so in a situation like that, are there some reserve funds somewhere that will help the district to pay a bill if a bill comes in?
That is why we have short-term borrowing.
Okay.
This is when our short-term borrowing kicks in. We short-term borrow 1.6 million every single year and we have to apply for that every single year. It's not a given that we get it automatically, we have to actually apply for it. So when I am in a deficit like this, I have to go to our PMA financial consultant, request a drawdown to help us from our short-term borrowing, to help us through these lean months. So we can make payroll, we can pay bills and everybody is still happy.
And in fact, we've short-term borrowed for what, like seven years or grown now or so?
Ever since I've been here, we've been short-term borrowing.
Yeah.
We used to borrow over 3 million in short-term borrowing when I got here. We are now down to 1.6 million. So good job for the board. What is fund balance? Fund balance is not cash. And I'm going to say it again, fund balance is not cash. Taxes receivable increases fund balance, but does not represent cash that has been collected or on hand. Same with payroll payables, they decrease fund balance for the same reason. I'm still going to have samples at the end, so it'll make it a little bit clearer. So why does the district need fund balance? Well, cash flow management. Nine years ago, when I started this district, we overspent our budget by 1.3 million dollars. Our fund balance was down to 400,000 dollars and I was begging the bank to borrow me money to make payroll. I will never, ever be in a situation like that again because it was stressful. It was stressful not only for me, it was stressful for the district administrator, it was stressful for the board, it was stressful for the community. The bank denied our line of credit because our fund balance was so low. It affected our borrowing, it just went right down, it's a domino effect. When you have a poor fund balance, you have a domino effect of bad things that happen. If you have a fund balance, it avoids excess short-term borrowing and interest expenditures. And I'll note our policy at the end of this presentation, so you can see what our policy is. Future plan purchases or uses. If we want to save money to buy a new boiler, this is where we put it. We, our revenues will exceed our expenses then, so we can save money to buy that boiler. It preserves a high bond rating. When we went out for a bond rating for our performance contracts, I was on the phone with our bond rating company for over an hour and a half, talking to them about our fiscal or our finances for the school district. They wanted to know what happened nine years ago. They wanted to know why or how we got to this point from 400,000 to over 3 million thousand, $3 million. They want to know every single detail. They want to know what our community is like, they want to know how are we going to gain more revenue. They're not, you can't hide anything from these people and they, they basically decide whether we get a good bond rating or a poor bond rating based on that phone call. And of course, I had Michelle from the, our financial consultant on that phone call as well. And provide for unseen expenditures. Now, what would happen if our boiler just blew up? I mean, what if we had a fire? I mean, obviously we would be covered for our property insurance, but what if we had some unforeseen expenditures that we absolutely needed to spend it on? If we had a $400,000 fund balance, we'd be bankrupt. So what does DPI recommend? The DPI makes absolutely no recommendation regarding the size of a district's fund balance. They leave that to the local decision and its size will depend upon many variables unique to the district. When I, when I talk about unique to the district, now, there, we are, we're 60, 68% funded by taxpayers and the rest is by state aid. So our state aid is only coming in little spurts throughout the year and the taxes are only coming in little spurts throughout the year. So there may be a district that is heavily funded in state aid and maybe not as funded by the taxpayers. When they, the state aid has a schedule as to when they make their payments, so if they're heavily funded in state aid, they probably don't need a larger fund balance the way people are with, that are funded by the taxpayers. So we're, we're 68% funded by the taxpayers, which means we get our main revenues in January, February, and April. That's when we get our money. Oh, and August, January, February, March, and August. That's when we get the bulk of our money because our state aid is so low that when we get it, yeah, it's nice to get, but it certainly does not sustain our operations. So what is our district's fund balance policy? Well, administrative policy 6235 states, the fund balance shall be maintained at a level sufficient to minimize short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes. Operational expectation, financial planning OE6 states, the district administrators will develop a budget that provides for an anticipated year-end fund balance and will strive to establish a level sufficient to avoid short-term cash flow borrowing. So now I'm going to show you an example. This is just a sample that kind of came out of my head. So let's say an individual has cash, $500. They have investments of 10,000, they have a home worth 110,000 and they, somebody owes them money. They, somebody, you know, their friend owes them $4,000. Their assets are 124,500. Now let's look at their liabilities. Well, they have a home, they probably have a mortgage of about 80,000. They owe somebody money, about 8,000. They have credit card debt of 4,000. Their liabilities are 92,000. So their net worth, their assets minus their liabilities are 32,500. You can see that they do not have 32,500 in cash, they have 10,500 in cash. The rest consists of other assets. So let's, let's look at a school district scenario. This is a sample of our district assets. We have cash, we have petty cash, we have a little bit of investments, taxes receivable, accounts receivable, due from other districts, due from federal government. Our assets are 7,566,818. So what do our liabilities look like? We have a lot of liabilities. We have our, our short-term borrowing, 1.6. We have FICA tax, all the payroll taxes. We have approved payroll, we have other deferred revenues. Our total liabilities are 2.6 million. So our assets minus our liabilities equal our fund equity or our fund balance of 4,926,676. Remind you, this is just a sample, none of my closing entries are recorded yet. So we do not have 4,900 in fund balance. So it's just a sample, I just pulled it today. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what fund balance really is. Now, the danger is, like, maybe we do want to spend some of the fund balance. As long as you're short-term borrowing, and I, the administrators have heard this from me forever, as long as we're short-term borrowing, I would recommend that we do not spend down our fund balance. Questions?
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Very good.
Lynn, what is like the percentage of, a good percentage that most districts, they, there usually is a, or don't?
Well, it's, it's probably 25 to 35% of operating expenses, but we're, we're at in that range and we still have to short-term borrow because of our funding. Now, there are other districts. Pardon me?
So it depends upon the state.
The funding, absolutely.
And when you get your money.
Yes.
Thank you. And any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Dave, anybody? Again, there was no, there was no objections or any finding, finding of non-compliance on this one. Motion to approve OE7 financial administration report as presented.
Oh, there's one thing, Brian. In number three, it talks about competitive bidding.
We're going to cut it out in a second.
Right, but it's incorrectly stated on this, on this, on this report.
It's currently listed as $10,000, we're in actuality, it's $15,000.
Right.
And that was taken care of in a policy meeting.
Right. Well, actually, it's, it's coming up. It's coming up, yep. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
We're going to be doing a first reading of that.
Yeah.
As we move on here, but with that noted, like noted that the $10,000 should actually be $15,000, I put the motion to approve OE7 financial administration monitoring report. be $15,000, I put the motion to approve OE7 Financial Administration Monitoring Report. All who's in favor, signify by aye.
Wait for the second. One second.
It's a Brian's.
I just put motion on the floor.
Great. Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay, wait for a second.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Lynn, very much. Vote. Who in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion. Okay, next one we get to is BSR1 Governance and Management Connection. This is a pretty important one, and I think that we've really worked on this one. And this one is just that the district administrators, the board's sole point of connection to the operational organization. The board will direct the operational organization only to the district administrator. Again, there was no findings of, of non-compliance. And I'd like to put a motion on the floor that the board approve, the Board District Administrator Relations BSr1.
So moved. Second.
All who's in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Next, we have Unity of Control, BSR2. And this one, again, only decisions of the board acting as a governing entity are binding on the district administrator. The interpretation of this, I interpret this to mean that the board works with the district administrator as a whole, not as individuals or subgroups. And we've done, I think, a good job of this and a good, and again, no, no, no issues reported any non-compliance. Any discussion on this? Any questions? I'll put a motion on the floor that the board approve, the Board District Administrator Relations BSr2.
So moved.
All who's in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Next one, GP1.
R1.
R1. Results Policy.
R1 Result Policy. Over our two results. In looking at this, this policy, we found the language to be somewhat, somewhat difficult. And it's something that I'd like to move along through next year.
Right, and so it's encompassing of all of the policies, and it really reflects our mission statement. So after we've had a chance to work through all the monitoring reports of all the policies, it's going to be, give us a better snapshot of really monitoring that mission of the district.
And again, again, that's very well stated, that until we can look at this picture of policy governance as a whole, that, we're not, does anybody have any problems with moving that ahead? Good, good, good. GP1, Board Purpose.
Lots of policies this month.
Lot of policies on the calendar this month. And I apologize, but these are, these are very important with regards to policy governance. Policy Statement. The Board of Education of the School District of Nacusa represents, leads, and serves the district's owners and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interest and by ensuring that all board and organizational action is consistent with the law and the board's policies. And I guess the other thing that I think is in this, in the fulfillment of this charge, the board is committed to rigorous and continual improvement of its capacity to govern effectively, using its policies to define its values and expectations. One of the goals of policy governance is the discipline of the school board, looking at the things that we need to, to effectively be stewards of this district as our taxpayers expect. And I, I feel very strongly in that. Again, we had no findings of non-compliance, so any questions, any, any issues, define ourselves on compliance? I'd like to make, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we approve Board Governance Policy, GP1, Board Purpose.
So moved.
Second. All who's in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. GP2, Board Governance Commitment.
Can I read that one for you?
Go ahead.
So the policy statement for GP2 Governance Commitment, "The Nacusa Board of Education supports the welfare and education of students, the interests of the community, and the work of the staff. The board shall hold itself accountable to property taxpayers of the School District of Nacusa, who are the owners of the district, by ensuring that all its actions are consistent with the board's policies and in compliance with state and federal statutes and regulations in order to meet these obligations and to model its expectations for the learning enterprise at the core of the district."
Very good. And again, that's, that's something that, you know, we as board members are accountable to our stakeholders, and, you know, defining that within policy governance just strengthens that. Again, we, we didn't have any indications of non-compliance, and I would like to put a motion on the floor that the board approve the governance process, GP2 Governance Commitment.
So moved.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
We're getting there. We have first reading of two policies. Learning Environment forward slash Treatment of Students OE5 and Financial Administration OE7. With regards to OE7, the change is simply the language of 10,000 to 15,000 to represent our actual policy and action. The Learning Environment forward slash Treatment of Students was something that we as a board worked on, and Terry, would you like to say anything about that?
Sure. We, the committee met last week and went over, or a couple weeks ago, within the last month, we've met, and we put more descriptors to this policy. So we added some points that we thought were missing as we've gone through the Operational Expectations Policies. So more detail around learning environment, treatment of students.
Very good. And this is again, first reading of both of those. Guess what? We're done with policies. We're gonna move on to other boardwork. The board received in the board packet following documents. This was for information only. It was the NHS Students and Parent Handbook, the NHS Co-Curricular Activities Code, AMS forward slash CWSA forward slash Nacusera Student Handbook, the Nacusa Youth Athletic Co-Curricular Code, and the Crisis Action Plan. Any questions or concerns on any of those items? Very good.
I would, could I just note one thing? Humke is currently working on theirs yet, so we'll be getting that available to you. The admin team also met today, and we've again stressed the importance, and you heard Brian talk a little bit about it today, really helping provide clarity around discipline. What does that look like beyond the beliefs? So we're really trying to hone in on that. I know the middle school is gonna be bringing forward something with, I think, next month. They've got a committee working on that. So that's something that we're really taking seriously so that we can do a great job, and there's gonna be a lot of work happening on that throughout this school year about bringing clarity to behaviors. So just be aware of that, please be watching for that.
Can I give you heads up on two, on what I will be bringing to you next month? I'm working with...
Can I just share real quick? So Keith is at a conference, a strength-based conference through Gallup, and Megan is here in his absence. So thank you, Megan, for being here.
Yep. I'm working with a community member who is also a parent and is also a volunteer coach in one of our sports to help write a coach's handbook that will clearly articulate what our vision is, philosophy, the goals of education-related athletics and activities, what we wish to see the future of all of our programs look like. It is really sort of my, my expectations on all of coaches and club advisors of what they are doing and when and who's responsible. There's a nice flow chart in there of who they should contact. It also has information that kind of outlines who takes care of what, and also who are the other coaches. Most of our coaches do not work in our district, which is really unusual. Across the conference, over 80% of all coaches and club advisors are teachers. And there's like five total coaches in our district who are. What I've found is a lack of some consistent communication and clarity around coaching and advising, and so I'm trying to add some clarity of how we do things and when we do things. And I know it's in here later, but coaching contracts is something I'm going to address in that as well, when they are issued and when people will know if, if they won't be issued and why. That individual and I are also working to rewrite the evaluation system, because I don't think it's useful. Now that I've done it for a year, I don't think it's getting at the heart of what we are aiming at. So it's, it's been a good process, but it's almost done. I wanna run through it and its completion with Keith and toss around a couple more ideas, but that'll be coming to you next month as well.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Oh, can I just tell you two, talked to two people, SRO Colo and then a new teacher that we've hired for two new clubs that I'm excited, really excited about.
Oh, yeah.
One is a law enforcement club that Officer Colo wishes to start to get kids interested and informed about what law enforcement does in the local community, and he's got some excellent ideas about getting kids out and getting them experiences, doing some training with the Nacusapidi. I'm hopeful that it's something that my daughter participated in, something in Rapids she had done where she went to the jail and loved every moment of it. So I'm excited for the opportunity that our kids have to kind of see what, you know, what other people do in their jobs. And then the other one I'm excited about is called Educators Rising. So we hired a, a new English teacher who had done this in her last school, and she went to a conference and found a statistic that says 60% of educators live and work within 20 miles of their hometowns. And said, you know, we have an education shortage, we're growing them right now, we just don't utilize that opportunity to, to turn them into teachers while they're still in high school. So it's a national organization that she works with and that hopefully we'll be, we'll be bringing in, but identifying people who are interested in some form of education, getting them experiences, giving them credits for those experiences. She's working it out with UW Oshkosh to get them college credit in high school to get them a start. Special education is one area which I'd like to talk to you about, and then there's some badges they can earn. But I'm really excited about the opportunity that...
Wow.
We're looking at two areas that our kids can fill in their hometowns and really contribute to making things what they want to see them, and we have the opportunity to grow that within our high school.
Thank you, thank you for your work on that. And we do have quite a few kids that are pursuing the law enforcement pathway. So, and look at here, we've got one of our very own right here. Ready to...
So our kids are gonna be riding along with you in September.
Can we get them in the cars?
I hope they're ready.
That's front, that's front seat, Brian, not, not...
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Gossner, for that update. Sounds like some very exciting things. Very exciting things. The two things I didn't mention, ETS Student Handbook and the AMS Behavior Plan. Good. Consent Agenda is next. Is there anything that anybody would like to mention, Consent Agenda? I would like to, first of all, donations, backpack for kids. We received $135 from Sacred Heart Collections. Thank you very much for that donation. All donations for that program are very much, very much appreciated. It's a great program. But any other items on the Consent Agenda? Anybody want to talk about and discuss?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Very good.
Second.
Oh, good. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. At this point, we are at the point where we can talk about a little things about future meetings. Our next board workshop will be on August 10th at 6:00 PM, and this is where we review the Operational Expectations to be adopted in August. This, this, this month, Operational Expectations didn't need a whole lot of work, but I think we found value the last time you met, and we'll look at these. It may not happen every month, but, you know, it's something that can be very important. And this one has to do with Treatment of Stakeholders, OE3. That's, that's a big one. Other than that, I am going to put out a motion on the floor too.
Could I have one minute, please? I'd like to introduce my intern for this summer. His name is Jonah Adams. He's been interning with me since Ju, June, right?
Yeah.
June. So he's a upcoming business manager. He's doing a great job.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you and welcome. Hope you enjoy your experience here. Very good.
We've been working on him. His eyes, I think, have been open. I don't, you wanna just share what you're, what it's been like? Do you have any?
I've learned a lot of things that I never, you know, learned about in college, I'll say that, you know, so it's, it's been really good, learning a lot.
So we're doing a book study with him as an admin team, so he's really getting a good experience. Lynn, you know how to do an intern.
He's probably pretty sick of me.
He's gotten into some good heated debates, I think, with, at least while Lynn and I worked together.
We have some lively debates.
Lively. So thank you for that.
Any other comments in terms of celebrations?
Well, I do, there is a celebration. I mean, if you take a look at our parking lots, we just went through a whole, you know, the majority of our parking lots got resurfaced and sealed, and you wanna share anything about that?
And the trap shoot.
Oh, and the trap shoot, yes.
Yes. I would like to thank administration for the admin team providing lunches for our students on Friday.
Diana had a good time.
Diana and Terry came out and got to experience what it's like, and we very much appreciate that. It was, it was quite a huge success.
Yes, it was.
And...
A good week.
Yes, it was.
Another celebration, it'd be interesting for the board to note that we're down to one more vacant position, and so we're just finalizing our vacant position between the middle school and Humke, so that's exciting. And really some high-quality candidates that are going to be moving into the school district, so we're excited.
Do we have a date yet when we're having our new teacher orientation?
Yes.
And returning teacher?
Yeah.
Let me fill that one. We are, our new, new teacher orientation is on August 22nd. That's a Tuesday, and that we'll be starting out with our new, and we'll be working with our new teachers for those three days during that week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then our returning, now, the date for our returning teachers is, that's the 28th. I wanna get that right.
Yep.
So, and 28th, 29th.
29th.
Did you get that right?
So that's a 7 o'clock start.
7 o'clock also on the Tuesday. I'll let you defer to that.
Almost 7:00 in the morning.
Right. So, our new teachers always come a week previous to all staff reporting back, and we're getting working... we're reducing the amount of time that we're doing district-level with them because we've been partnering together with Wisconsin Rapids and Port Edwards to go ahead and provide support once a month all throughout the school year. And so, we... as a result, we can give that time back to the buildings for training and work with them, and the teachers hopefully aren't having their heads swimming with so much stuff, getting... drink water out of fire hydrants so quick, first thing. So, we're doing that week, and then, we have all the teachers back on the 29th then.
Yep, and that'll be at the high school this year.
At the high school.
7 o'clock breakfast, 7:30.
And the 22nd, what day, what time is that for the new teacher?
22nd? I don't have in front of me. I'm gonna say around, probably around 8 o'clock.
We'll get that out. And then, we do a breakfast, right? And I think the board's been invited to breakfast, and then, we have a lunch that will get planned.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody, this evening for all of your time and efforts and presentations. And at this point, I believe we can put a motion up there.
Want a motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A little... there.